A preemptive look at these maps to ensure that we don't waste any more time than we already have. And so with that, Mr. Speaker, I would be happy to yield any questions that my colleagues may have.
For what purpose?
Will the gentleman yield?
Gentlemen yield for questions. He yields for questions.
Thank you. Representative Dutton, one of the criteria that we look at to determine whether a map preserves or protects communities of interest, I want to explore the map on this criteria. Can you explain to us what the residents in East Austin have in common with the residents in Port Aransas?
Well, again, what I say is one thing. What I think Chairman Hunter would say is something else, is just the opposite. And so what this amendment says is that, wait a minute, we're going to make sure that we get this right by letting the federal court decide what the answers to your questions and the questions that many people have here. That is the only way I can consider that we would not waste a whole lot of time in terms of getting whatever maps that this body wants to pass completed and done with. And it ought not to be a process that ends and begins here, but it ought to be looked at by the federal courts.
Okay. Can you explain how representatives of communities and interests in perhaps North Austin have in common with the residents in East Texas?
Well, again, you know, my argument would be one side, and I think Chairman Hunter's would be another. And so we're not going to resolve that in here, except that typically the majority, 76 votes, means that this thing can pass. And I suspect that's going to happen today. But I do not think that's the last stage in this process. And so what I'm suggesting by this amendment is that we make sure that we have got it right by ensuring that the accountability provided by a federal court overlook is in place when we pass this map. And so that's what this amendment does. It says that we're going to put the federal courts in this, we're going to actively put the federal courts in it because we can passively do that already, because I'm sure somebody will go and pass, or at least file an objection to it. But this body ought to recognize that there is a difference of opinion in terms of answering your question and the questions of many people here about whether or not the rights of Black and Latino voters are bridged by this map. And we're not going to decide that here. This map may get voted out, but that's not a decision about whether this map is or isn't. And I think we ought to put the federal courts in it to make sure that we get it right.
Well, we know that Austin is the capital of Texas, and it is a booming city. East Texas has a dearth of hospital access. Are you aware about that, that that is the case in Austin? That it's not the case in Austin?
Yes.
Also, East Texas has different economic drivers than Austin, does it not?
I believe that's the case, yes.
Austin is often ranked as one of the top cities in the country and is sought after by many corporations, as it's known throughout the world. That is not the case in East Texas, is that correct?
Well, that's one opinion, and that's what I'm saying, is irrespective of whether my opinion says that I believe East Austin and East Texas have anything in common at all, or whether or not the other side says that they have everything in common, that makes no difference to me. What makes a difference is having the federal court's oversight look at this and make the determination as to whether or not we are actively, not passively, but actively engaging in the abridging of the rights of Black and Latino voters.
I agree with you, Mr. Dutton. Now, one last question on this. I believe that Austin and East Texas do not, are not communities of interest, so don't you believe that East Texas should have appropriate representation in D.C.?
I believe that about all districts. I believe that about all areas of Texas. I believe that the real question for us here is whether or not we can make that happen. And if one side feels that we have and the other side feels that we haven't, there is going to be an independent determination made, and that's going to be made by federal courts. And what this amendment does is simply says that we're going to put the federal courts in this at the start of this bill, as opposed to after the bill is passed, but we're going to say today that this map, whether it may be this or it may be that, we're going to let the federal courts in it so that when the federal court makes the decision, then that's when this bill can take effect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jones, for what purpose?
The gentleman yields for a couple of questions.
Yes.
Gentleman yields for questions. So throughout the debate, the author has made it a point to overemphasize how not racist and how not, how this bill does not impact communities of color. But I just want to ask particularly for the Dallas-Fort Worth region, are you aware that in North Texas, the population of Dallas and Tarrant Counties together have increased by over a half a million residents over the last decade, and it was all, not just some, Hispanic, Black, Asian, and other minority groups?
Yes.
And also, are you aware that the Anglo population in Dallas and Tarrant County has dropped by over 90,000 people, or about 60,000 in Dallas County and about 30,000 in Tarrant County?
Yes, I am. And that's the point I'm making, is that if you look through the eyes from which you're looking, you'll come up with one conclusion about what's going on and what needs to be done. What I believe the other side is doing is looking through another lens and suggesting that that's okay under the law. Well, I think the only way we know what's okay under the law is to have the law take a look at it, and that's the federal court's job, and that's why I'm having this amendment, to make sure that the federal courts are in this bill so that this bill does not take effect until the federal courts have made a decision. In fact, one of the cases, the Purcell case, which says that, it stands for the proposition that if you get a change in election law to the courts too late, it's too late. It means that if you get it there too late to effectively do the changes by the federal court, the federal court will basically ignore it. And so what this does is says that we're going to put the federal courts in it so that the federal courts will decide the issues that have been raised here, whether or not they are in fact one way or the other.
Well, thank you so much for that, Representative Dutton.
Gentleman's time has expired.
Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Bowers, for what purpose?
I'd like to ask the gentleman's time be extended.
Members, this is a motion for the first extension of time on the amendment layout. Is there objection? Chair here.
Objection.
Okay, there is a record vote has been requested on the motion to extend time. All those in favor vote aye, all those opposed vote nay. Clerk will ring the bell. Show Mr. Hunter voting aye, show Mr. Dutton voting aye. Show Mr. Basut voting aye, show Mr. King voting aye. Have all members voted. Have all members voted. There being 118 ayes and 15 nays, the motion prevails. Ms. Bowers, for what purpose?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the gentleman yield for a question? Just one question.
I yield, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman yields for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, Mr. Dutton, when it goes into communities of interest, just a quick question, what interest does the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex share with the Panhandle, if any?
To make sure that the federal courts are ingrained in this bill so that they can actually make this determination that both sides, I think, want made.
Yes.
Because I don't think one side wants to, one side is saying it's a racist map, the other side is saying, well, race didn't play a part in it, it's all political partisan. Well, you know, you could, as a lawyer, I suspect that depending on who paid me, I could probably argue either side. But the point is that we need an independent accountability for this bill, and that's the only way we're going to get it, is through the federal courts. And so we might as well put them in this bill and make sure that this bill doesn't take effect until we've had that federal court decision. And that's what this amendment does.
Thank you for that. I mean, the simple answer is not a darn thing.
Probably, you're right. You're right. And whether or not that ought to be considered in terms by the courts is a whole separate matter, and so that's why we ought to, everybody ought to be voting for this amendment.
Thank you, sir.
And I move adoption of the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Mr. Hunter in opposition to the amendment.
Members, I'll be motioning to table. It's an unnecessary step, and we don't have kind of a preclearance anymore, so I'll be moving to table. Thank you.
Mr. Dutton sends up an amendment. Excuse me, Mr., Chair recognizes Mr. Dutton to close on the amendment.
Thank you. I respect Chairman Hunter's designation that we don't have preclearance, but that's not necessarily what I'm asking to do. What I'm asking is that if one side thinks this is the right thing to do, it shouldn't be a problem having the federal courts decide it. If the other side says that we don't like it, then they ought to be acceptable of the federal courts making the determination. And to be opposed to it would almost suggest to me that you believe something is wrong with this, and that that something wrong is the fact that perhaps the other side's contentions are more valid, and so as a consequence, you don't want a federal court to look at it. Well, I think you ought to be for an independent look at this so that the issue of accountability is placed in this bill such that we have a federal court not only look at it, but make the decision as to whether or not one side is right, the other side is right. I trust the federal courts. You've had several arguments from the back mic from both sides about what federal courts have said. This is an attempt to give the federal courts an opportunity to say whether or not this bill is valid and whether or not it abridges the rights of the people of color, both Black and Latino citizens in this state. And I don't see anything wrong with that. I know we don't have preclearance, but we ought to have a predisposition to making this right. And so with that, I move to vote no on the motion to table.
Mr. Dutton sends up an amendment. Mr. Hunter moves to table the amendment. The question is on the motion to table. If you're in favor of the amendment, vote no on the motion to table. If you are opposed to the amendment, vote yes on the motion to table. Record vote has been requested. Clerk will ring the bell. Show Mr. Button, Mr. Dutton voting nay. Show Mr. Hunter voting aye. Have all members voted. Have all members voted. There being 85 ayes and 49 nays, the motion to table prevails. The following amendment, the clerk will read the amendment. Chair recognizes Ms. Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members. This is an amendment that says that the, does not allow the bill to go into effect until an independent redistricting commission has been established. Members, what is happening on the floor today is a blatantly obvious attempt to determine the outcome of the upcoming midterm election before a single vote is cast. Those who vote in favor of this bill will be supporting a process that has been engineered to dilute the power and voices of voters of color in Texas. With the push of a button, you are taking the decision away from the voters of Texas. But where I come from in Texas, we're proud of our independent-mindedness and believe in our right to self-determination, which is why I know there is no reason why Texans should settle for a redistricting process that does not let us make up our own minds. Today's proceedings are proof that the legislature should not be responsible for drawing these maps. It's clear that when left to do so, the legislature will abuse its power to silence the voices of its constituents. House Bill 4 targets congressional districts that have historically been held by Texans of color and eliminates the community's ability to elect the candidate of their choice. Here in Travis County, the proposed maps would eliminate our only court-ordered Minority Opportunity District created to protect the voting rights of people of color. In 2017, a panel of federal judges ruled that three of our congressional districts, including CD 35 here in Travis County, were illegal and violated the Voting Rights Act and the Constitution. As a result, Texas was forced to redraw the maps to ensure Texans of color received fair representation in Congress. Now this body seeks to eliminate that district and strip Black and Brown voters in Austin of their voice in Congress. As many of you know, I have called Austin my home for my entire life. I spent my youth in and around North Austin, my young adulthood in Central and East Austin, and have called West and South Austin home for the last 50 years. I know my community better than anyone who drew the lines on this map and can assure you that districts drawn from urban Austin through rural communities extending to Louisiana, Port Aransas, and the New Mexico border do not reflect communities of interest. Instead of strengthening Black and Brown representation in Congress, which would better reflect the true ethnic and racial makeup of our state, this body seeks to dilute their power and eliminate their voice. Therefore, the most responsible and ethical vote we can take today is to pause this sham process until an independent redistricting commission has been established. Doing so will ensure the people of Texas have a voice in this process and can help guide where and how their districts are drawn. True representation and fair access to the polls are the foundation of our electoral system because in a democratic society, ultimate accountability occurs at the ballot box. As elected officials, it is our duty to represent the people of Texas and be their voice of government, and as members of the People's House, we are supposed to have our fingers on the pulse of our communities. Districts lines that include disparate communities hours apart from one another do not allow for fair representation. The only reason to include them in the same district would be to dilute their power and voice in Congress. H.B. 4 is a blatant attempt by a handful of elected officials to choose their voters because they are afraid their voters won't choose them. It is clearer than ever before that how and where voting lines are drawn have a direct impact on a community's representation in government and its ability to influence change. I urge you to vote in favor of this amendment and show your constituents that you value their voice over currying favor with your political allies. Mr. Speaker.
Ms. Inahosa, for what purpose?
Well, the representative yield for questions.
Yes, I will.
The gentlelady yields for questions.
Representative Howard, let me make sure that I understand what your amendment does. What your amendment would do is take away the power from the politicians to draw their own districts and the districts of their buddy politicians and give it instead to an independent commission that consists of the people of Texas. Is that correct?
Absolutely, and we have a bill that's been filed that would do that.
And whose bill is that, that...
It's Representative Johnson's bill.
Okay. And is this an issue of first impression for you, Representative Howard? Have you heard of this before, these independent redistricting commissions?
Yes, I've actually filed legislation for an independent redistricting commission basically every session for over the past decade.
Thank you, and I have signed on to your legislation. I appreciate that effort. Are you aware that the independent redistricting committees protect minorities from illegal cracking and packing of their districts?
Yes, I am aware.
And isn't that in fact what is happening in this bill, the cracking and packing of minority districts?
It certainly appears that way, and we certainly have an example of it here in Travis County.
And in fact, minority districts are targeted for elimination in this bill, aren't they?
Certainly in Travis County, that's the case.
In Travis County, we have two congressional districts, is that correct?
Who has two congressional districts?
Currently, there are two congressional districts in Austin.
There are actually, I guess I'm trying to understand the question.
Okay.
Because there are several congressional districts that are part of Austin.
Okay.
But we have two right now that are Democratic districts, yes. And one of those is the court-ordered Minority Opportunity District, and it is no longer a part of Austin in this map.
So it is eliminated. The one Minority Opportunity District is eliminated, is that correct?
Correct, absolutely.
Okay. And of course, you and I both live in Austin, and so that is an issue of interest to us. Are you familiar with House, I'm sorry, Congressional District 34, which is also significantly altered in South Texas, the Rio Grande Valley where I am from?
You'll have to explain that to me.
So currently, in Congressional District 34, that community has chosen Vicente Gonzalez as their member of Congress. Were you aware of that?
Yes.
That's in South Texas. And did you know that in this bill, in that district, almost 70,000 new Anglo voters are added to that district, while at the same time, almost 25,000 Hispanic voters are removed from that district? Were you aware of that?
I was not, but that does sound like it's diluting their representation.
Do you know what the majority ethnic population in Brownsville, which is the large city in that district, is?
I can imagine that it is Latino.
It is over 95% Latino and growing in terms of Latino population. So do you have an understanding of why the Latino population would be decreased while the Anglo population is doubled to almost 70,000 extra voters in that district?
I do not know why, other than it appears to be diluting their vote.
Does it sound to you like the Texas Republican leadership that drew this map is enhancing and embracing the Latino vote in this district or running from it?
I would suggest running from it.
And so a reading on its face of this bill, on this map, makes it clear that this redistricting bill is an attack on Latino power, at least in Congressional District 34 in the Rio Grande Valley, is it not?
Sounds like it.
Are you aware that independent redistricting committees provide a fair and even forum for voters to be represented in Congress?
Absolutely.
Are you aware that independent redistricting committees provide more transparency and more public input in the map drawing process?
Absolutely, they're a part of the process.
Were you aware that we have not had a hearing where the public has been allowed to weigh in on this map that is before us, we will be voting on today?
I'm aware.
Are you aware that the independent redistricting committees are already in use by other states and have improved their redistricting process?
Absolutely, that's the case.
This is a great amendment. Thank you.
Gentleman's time has expired.
Move adoption.
Chair recognizes Mr. Hunter to speak in opposition to the amendment.
I'm going to be moving to table. The redistricting commission is really a delay of this process. We're in the middle of what we can do by law, and so I'll be moving to table.
Chair recognizes Ms. Howard to close on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members. Just reiterate that the examples that I've given in particular in regard to Travis County clearly show that there are not communities of interest being kept together here. When you have Austin reaching all the way to the Permian Basin and Midland-Odesa, clearly not the same issues, reaching to the Big Thicket in East Texas, reaching to Port Aransas, Matagorda Bay, Port Lavaca and the coastal, coast of Texas, with Austin, our issues are very different. We need to have compactness, we need to have communities of interest. An independent redistricting commission would be a way that we could establish that. And with that, I, what am I doing? Motion to table. Oppose the motion to table. Thank you.
Ms. Howard sends up an amendment. Mr. Hunter moves to table the amendment. The question is on the motion to table. If you are in favor of the amendment, vote no on the motion to table. If you're opposed to the amendment, vote yes on the motion to table. Record vote has been requested. The clerk will ring the bell. Show Ms. Howard voting no, show Mr. Hunter voting aye. Have all members voted. Have all members voted. There being 86 ayes and 51 nays, the motion to table prevails. Following amendment, the clerk will read the amendment.
Amendment by Plesha.
Chair recognizes Ms. Plesha.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members. This amendment is simple. If you believe in redistricting as a principled process, then you should have no problem saying yes to this amendment. What it does is basically says that we will not do redistricting without having a census. For over two centuries, the accepted norm of American democracy has been redrawing maps once a decade so that the peoples represented are based on accurate official population data. This amendment simply codifies that tradition. Redistricting should only occur within two years of a census when population numbers are fresh and reliable. Anything else opens the door for those in power to consistently choose their voters rather than the voters electing them. What changed between 2021 and 2025 that requires this body to readdress the fairness of our maps? This isn't about fairness or representation, it's about rushing through maps before 2026 midterm elections. That's not the reason, if that's not the reason, why are we rushing this? If my Republican colleagues reject this amendment, they are admitting on record that this bill isn't about fairness. This is a test whether this House stands for democratic norms or unfair manipulations. I move adoption.
Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Reynolds, for what purpose?
Would the gentlelady yield for questions?
I do.
The gentlelady yields for questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Plesha. Are you aware that in Houston, voting precincts with high populations of non-citizens east of downtown would be carved out of CD 29, currently represented by Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia's district, and moved to a newly drawn district that would have supported President Trump by 15 percentage points in the 2020 election?
Yeah, CD 29 includes many low citizenship voting precincts, especially in the areas east of downtown Houston. Many of these precincts also saw very low turnout in November 2024. In some precincts, only 30% of registered voters cast ballots versus the 62% in a typical Texas precinct.
So this new district is packing non-citizens who are predominantly Latino and also Latino citizens who are low propensity voters, correct?
You are correct.
It looks like many of the voters who are low propensity or non-citizens in the Latino community were moved into CD 9. Is that correct?
It appears so.
Are you aware that currently CD 9 is represented by Congressman Al Green?
Yes.
CD 35 also has low propensity and non-citizen Latino community members moved into CD 27 in the Austin area. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware of this purposeful targeting of Latino populations?
Yes, it seems to be targeting them.
To quote law professor Justin Levitt, isn't it true that putting people who can't themselves vote in a district with people who can vote and have very different concerns dilutes the representation of folks who can't vote at all?
This is the most cynical form of cracking and packing on the basis of race.
Are you aware that Texas has employed the strategy of packing low propensity voters from Latino communities in redistricting before?
Yes.
And are you aware finally that based on the 2020 census, that 95% of the growth in Texas was because of minority population, African-Americans, Hispanics, and Asians? Are you aware of that?
That's what the last census showed us, and that's the information that we went by.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Mr. Hunter in opposition to the amendment. Chair recognizes Mr. Hunter in opposition to the amendment.
Mr. Speaker, members, I'll be moving to table. Again, it's changing the census date, which basically is a delay. I'll be moving to table.
Chair recognizes Ms. Plessa to close on the amendment.
Members, at its core, this amendment is about trust in our democratic process. For over two centuries, we have relied on the census to ensure redistricting reflects real communities and real people, not political timelines. If we rush this process, we undermine that trust. This amendment doesn't change the rules, it simply ensures that we play by them. I respectfully ask for your support and move adoption.
Ms. Plessa sends up an amendment. Mr. Hunter moves to table. Question is on the motion to table. If you're in favor of the amendment, vote no on the motion to table. If you're opposed to the amendment, vote yes on the motion to table. Record vote has been requested. The clerk will ring the bell. Show Mr. Hunter voting aye, show Mr. Verdel voting aye. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? There being 84 ayes and 52 nays, the motion to table prevails. The following amendment, the clerk will read the amendment.
Amendment by Garcia Hernandez.
Chair recognizes Ms. Garcia Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members, right now we are flying blind in terms of data for House Bill 4, when we should be focusing first and foremost on legislation to help Texans who are affected by Hill Country floods. After they were insured we would, or eliminating the STAR test, we are instead debating this map. A different map than the one that had public hearings, and that is missing examination of updated CVAP, Citizen Voting Age Population Study data. As such, I'm offering this amendment to provide that information. This amendment simply mandates the Secretary of State conduct a CVAP study of this new proposed map and release the results of said study before the final day of the filing period before the 2026 primary for members of the United States House of Representatives of the 120th Congress from the state of Texas. A CVAP study is a study of the racial and ethnic data of the measured area, in this instance, of the state of Texas. If this is not done, we will be using data from Census 2020 for this mid-decade redistricting, data that is outdated from five years ago. CVAP studies are done every census, but we have no updated census data currently. The United States Census is a nationwide count of every person living in the United States. It is meant to provide comprehensive data on the population's size, age, race, ethnicity, housing, and family structure makeup of this country. Typically, before any redistricting occurs, the country takes the census to determine what changes have occurred, which is why redistricting is done right after the census, like we did in 2021. However, for this rigged mid-decade redistricting scheme, there is no new census or even data being collected. Let's change that. This amendment mandates that the Secretary of State conduct a Citizen Voting Age Population Study of the racial and ethnic groups of this state. Furthermore, the results would be publicly released by the Secretary of State before the last day to file as a candidate in the primary election held in 2026, and will also contain recommendations for legislative action if necessary. Republicans say that this rigged mid-decade redistricting scheme is not based on racial grounds. So let's find out. There should be no issue with this amendment if this new map is not based on racial grounds. This amendment would be beneficial because it could lay to rest any claims of racial gerrymandering once and for all for this proposal. Please support this amendment for a CVAP study. Let's make sure we have the appropriate data to understand the impact of what we're doing here during this unprecedented and uncommon mid-decade redistricting.
Mr. Speaker? Mr. Moody, for what purpose?
Will the gentle lady yield for some questions?
Does the gentle lady yield for questions?
I yield for questions.
Gentle lady yields for questions.
Thank you, Representative, and in laying out this amendment, you talked about the accuracy of data. You specifically referenced accurate population data. In fact, your amendment calls for a CVAP report to be produced. You would agree with me that it's fairly important in the redistricting process to have updated and accurate information, isn't that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
And specifically, when we're talking about what your amendment does, and that directs the Secretary of State to gather this CVAP analysis, that is not something that is uncommon, right? That actually does, that happens when we go through the census process and the following redistricting process, the redistricting process following the census.
Absolutely, that's correct. And we're essentially just making sure that whatever is typically done in the census prior to when we typically redistrict is in fact doing, is being done through the CVAP study.
And so I think, just so that we can go through this, the data you're trying to drill down to, and for those of us who have kind of worked around this policy area before, CVAP is a term that we use. It stands for Citizen Voting Age Population. So we're not talking about the population, we're not talking about voting age population. We are then talking about probably the smallest subset of that, which would be Citizen Voting Age Population within those congressional districts that are being proposed here, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then you further bracketed that to talk about looking at those numbers as it's based on racial ethnicities?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and I, being part of the redistricting committee, and I did this work back in 19 and 21 as well, we heard a lot of testimony about the growth of the population in this state, and that people of color make up 95% of Texas' recent population growth. But the map that we're seeing today, and again, we don't have the data that your amendment would provide, it creates more majority Anglo districts. Is that your understanding of the map that we have in front of us?
Yes, that is correct.
And I know that we've had a significant amount of conversation about what is driving the drawing of these maps, and that the claim is that there is no racial gerrymandering, and it's important, right, that racial gerrymandering is prohibited. And so the claim here is that that's not being done. Are you aware that that's the claim that's being made as it pertains to this particular map?
Yes, absolutely.
And so I think drilling down to the core of your amendment, you were saying, if that's not what's going on here, then let's see. Because we don't see the CVAP numbers for these racial ethnicities. We are not seeing the CVAP data as current today. We are only seeing it as a snapshot of 2020, is that correct?
Absolutely. There's only been five years that have passed since the census. Clearly, Texas has been growing in population. We want to make sure that the CVAP reflects as far as that the particular redistricting that's going on right now. The mid-decade redistricting, in fact, is not racial gerrymandering.
Yes, and so I think that it's always best to be accurate with data, particularly when we're talking about protected, you know, we have legal protections around certain types of gerrymandering. However, we're operating without that most current information. And if this didn't have those impacts, your amendment would actually allow us to bring that to light through the Secretary of State, and it would actually bring it to light before the filing deadline when these maps become effective.
Yes, that's correct.
And then secondarily, though, your amendment has a component to it that states if there are things that need to be mitigated after that Secretary of State report, there then is an opportunity to fix those. So even in the event that there is something that happened here that we don't know, because we don't have the numbers, that would give an opportunity to alleviate those concerns around racial gerrymandering, is that correct?
That is correct. The actual amendment itself indicates that after the creation of the report, that the Secretary of State can in fact not only report the results of the study, but provide recommendations for legislative or other action to correct any issues.
And in your opinion, how important is it for the people that we all represent to know, to have confidence in the fact that there is not racial gerrymandering going on here?
I think it's incredibly important, and more than anything, I know we in particular continue to keep talking about the cases that have come out of the U.S. Supreme Court. We want to make sure that this particular map does not violate both Section 2 of the VRA, as well as the 14th and 15th Amendments as well.
And so the CVAP data that you're after here, to bring everything up to date, to say this is what Texas looks like today, that would be able to verify what's going on, what's underneath this, and if there is any racial gerrymandering going on. Is that the purpose of the amendment?
That is correct, and that's all that we're asking for, is just making sure. Since we don't have a recent census and therefore redistricting based off that, we in fact compile the data that's needed to confirm that in fact these maps are not being drawn on racial lines.
And because certain racial groups have protections under the Voting Rights Act, is it your belief that having this CVAP data does in fact protect people's rights here in Texas under the Voting Rights Act?
Absolutely, I do.
Thank you very much, Representative.
Thank you, Representative.
Mr. Hunter, in opposition. Thompson, for what purpose?
I wonder if the gentleman will yield.
Not just yet.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Members, I'll be moving to table. The purpose of this amendment is to get the Secretary of State to get involved into data and census. And to me, it is basically another delay process. So my view is I'll be moving to table. Now I'll answer questions.
Thompson, for what purpose?
Will the gentleman yield?
Gentleman, yield for questions?
Thank you.
He yields for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask you just three things, and I'm through. Did you, was that in consideration in looking at the Congressional District Number 9? The HCVA, the Hispanic Voting Age Population in 9, after you, after your substitute? Because it seems to show that there are barely 50% of Hispanics in that area. Was that by accident?
No, the data shows that the substitute made it at 50.15.
Okay.
So it modified.
Okay, then. And I also noticed, and that was some changes made in splitting precinct 414 in four different ways. At four, I mean, four different times. And was that, what was the purpose of splitting that precinct those four different times?
Personal knowledge, none, just the criteria of political performance.
You don't know what kind of?
Not specific knowledge.
Okay, then, so that was, the criteria was considered in, you don't know what criteria was utilized?
Counsel looked at all the criteria. I personally did not.
But you're not aware of what was that criteria that caused the splitting?
No, ma'am.
And lastly, there was also a splitting of precinct 533 and 386 in that area as well. Do you know the purpose of splitting those precincts?
Same answer on that.
You don't know what data may have been considered?
No, just relied on counsel, and they went through everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move to table.
Chair has to close.
Thank you, Speaker. Members, I understand that Representative wants to do a motion to table. All we're asking here is that we make sure that the maps that in fact are being drafted are not infringing on and illegal in violating both Section 2 of the VRA, as well as the 14th and 15th Amendments. This is not anything different that's done during the census prior to whenever we typically redistrict. And so all we're asking is that the CVAP study be done, and that it be done in a timely way, that people are aware of how it impacts them prior to the last day of filing for the primary for congressional candidates here in the state of Texas. So I would ask respectfully that all of you vote in making sure that we are transparent, that we are making sure that we are not violating these laws, and that we are making sure that Texans recognize that we are not in the business of silencing our communities and our people. I respectfully ask that you vote against the motion to table. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia Hernandez sends up an amendment. Mr. Hunter is moved to table. The question is on the motion to table. Clerk, ring the bell. Show Mr. Hunter voting aye, Ms. Garcia Hernandez voting nay. Have all members voted? Mr. Alcott voting aye. Have all members voted? 87 ayes, 52 nays, the motion to table prevails. Following amendment, clerk will read the amendment.
Amendment by Bernal.
Chair has Mr. Bernal.
Mr. Speaker?
For what purpose?
Raise a point of order against further consideration of the Bernal amendment under Rule 11, Section 2, on the grounds that it is not germane.
Bring your point of order down front.
The following amendment, clerk will read the amendment.
Questions for the other? Be polite, be a gentleman.
Amendment by Garcia of Dallas.
Chair recognizes Ms. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members. My amendment is straightforward. This bill would not go into effect until Congress enacts legislation to make social security solvable.
I raise a point of order against further consideration of this amendment under Rule 11, Section 2, on the grounds that it is not germane.
Bring your point of order down front.
The point of order has been withdrawn. The amendment's been withdrawn.
Ms. Jones, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Did you know how many members accepted DPS supervision over the last 24 hours?
Chair is not advised.
Do you know that each member was assigned...
Ms. Jones, for what purpose?
Oh, my apologies. Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Do you know that each member that was assigned to DPS supervision had two members assigned to them 24 hours a day?
Chair is not advised.
Thank you. Ms. Speaker.
Jones, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Do you know, or was there an account taken of the assignments that DPS officers were pulled off of before being assigned to surveillance members of the Texas House?
Chair is not advised.
All right. Last question. Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Do you know that the tasks that were assigned previously to assigning members, being assigned to members, were high-level investigations, sex crime, as well as fraud division? Officers were pulled to surveillance House members?
Chair is not advised.
Thank you.
Following amendment, clerk will read the amendment.
Chair has Dr. Lalani.
Ms. Speaker. I raise a point of order against further consideration of the Lalani amendment under Rule 11, Section 2, on the grounds that it is not germane to the bill.
Bring your point of order down front. Ms. Jones, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Did you know how many members accepted DPS supervision over the last 24 hours?
Chair is not advised.
Do you know that each member was assigned...
Ms. Jones, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Do you know that each member that was assigned to DPS supervision had two members assigned to them 24 hours a day?
Chair is not advised.
Thank you. Ms. Speaker.
Jones, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Do you know, or was there an account taken of the assignments that DPS officers were pulled off of before being assigned to surveillance members of the Texas House?
Chair is not advised.
All right. Last question. Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Do you know that the tasks that were assigned previously to assigning members, being assigned to members, were high-level investigations, sex crime, as well as fraud division? Officers were pulled to surveillance House members?
Chair is not advised.
Thank you.
Following amendment, clerk will read the amendment.
Amendment by Lalani.
Chair has Dr. Lalani.
Ms. Speaker.
For what purpose?
I raise a point of order against further consideration of the Lalani amendment under Rule 11, Section 2, on the grounds that it is not germane to the bill.
Bring your point of order down front.
Thank you.
The point of order has been withdrawn. The amendment's been withdrawn.
Ms. Speaker.
Ms. Jones, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Did you know how many members accepted DPS supervision over the last 24 hours?
Chair is not advised.
Thank you.
Following amendment, clerk will read the amendment. Amendment by Lalani.
Chair has Dr. Lalani.
Ms. Speaker.
For what purpose?
I raise a point of order against further consideration of the Lalani amendment under Rule 11, Section 2, on the grounds that it is not germane to the bill.
Bring your point of order down front.
Thank you.
The point of order has been withdrawn. The amendment's been withdrawn.
Ms. Speaker.
Ms. Jones, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Did you know how many members accepted DPS supervision over the last 24 hours?
Chair is not advised.
Thank you. Ms. Speaker.
Ms. Jones, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Do you know, or was there an account taken of the assignments that DPS officers were pulled off of before being assigned to surveillance members of the Texas House?
Chair is not advised.
All right. Last question. Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Do you know that the tasks that were assigned previously to assigning members, being assigned to members, were high-level investigations, sex crime, as well as fraud division? Officers were pulled to surveillance House members?
Chair is not advised.
Thank you.
Following amendment, clerk will read the amendment.
Amendment by Lalani.
Chair has Dr. Lalani.
Ms. Speaker.
For what purpose?
I raise a point of order against further consideration of the Lalani amendment under Rule 11, Section 2, on the grounds that it is not germane to the bill.
Bring your point of order down front.
Thank you.
The point of order has been withdrawn. The amendment's been withdrawn. Following amendment, clerk will read the amendment.
Chair has Dr. Lalani.
Ms. Speaker.
For what purpose?
I raise a point of order against further consideration of the Lalani amendment under Rule 11, Section 2, on the grounds that it is not germane to the bill.
Bring your point of order down front.
Thank you.
The point of order has been withdrawn. The amendment's been withdrawn. Following amendment, clerk will read the amendment. Mr. Wu.
Chair recognizes Mr. Wu.
Ms. Speaker.
Ms. Kane, for what purpose?
I raise a point of order against further consideration of this amendment under Rule 11, Section 2, on the grounds that the amendment is not germane to the bill.
Bring your point of order down front.
The point of order has been withdrawn, the amendment's been withdrawn. Following amendment, clerk will read the amendment. Mr. Wu.
Amendment by Wu.
Chair recognizes Mr. Wu.
Ms. Speaker.
Mr. Kane, for what purpose?
I raise a point of order against further consideration of this amendment under Rule 11, Section 2, on the grounds that the amendment is not germane to the bill.
Bring your point of order down front.
Mr. Kane raises a point of order against further consideration of the Wu amendment, Amendment Number 11, under Rule 11, Section 2, on the grounds that the amendment is not germane to the bill. The bill changes the composition of districts for the election of members to the United States House of Representatives. The Wu amendment makes the effective date of the bill contingent on a matter that is not even remotely related to the congressional redistricting. The amendment is not germane, accordingly, the point of order is sustained.
Following amendment, clerk will read the amendment.
Amendment by Y. Davis of Dallas.
Chair recognizes Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. This is an amendment that I'm bringing forward to the body because I think we have kind of gotten off pace and I just want to understand, make sure that we understand that we passed a redistricting bill in 2021. For the most part, more than 80% of this body was a part of that bill. Most, maybe 85% of us are the same ones who passed this bill in 2021. So I'm bringing this back to, for consideration because I think it's important that you realize that the tweaks that I made are amendments that we offered during that time. But I don't know why we're changing something we did in 2021. Chairman Hunter presented a redistricting bill, this body voted on it. We consider the facts that you have to consider where it deals with all of the guidelines. I'm just wondering, why are we changing this bill? Why are we doing this again? So I'm wondering, when did this notion that we now don't consider communities of interest, we don't consider breaking up political subdivisions, this winner-take-all approach that says we're gonna, because we can, we're gonna diminish the presence of districts that have been here? So I'm just wondering, why wouldn't we go back to what we did as a body? Are these Texas decisions or somebody else's decisions? Because we did this in 2021. So my map, C2165, basically puts people back together. They talked about coalition districts. Well, the map that you presented creates coalition districts already. They, your map that Chairman Hunter has today creates coalition districts. So we know there are some form of coalition districts you can have, notwithstanding what the Justice Department said, there is a way to have coalition districts, it's just how we define them. And I would submit that your map allows them if they are coalition districts between Hispanics and Anglo districts and Hispanic and African-American districts are unacceptable. Again, this issue of race continues to be some of the guiding factors that's leading us to this divide. As Texans, we have had four congressional seats for African-American districts to represent the African-American community, the state of Texas, beyond our geographic, but also the state of Texas. And we're now going to diminish that, knowing that our population African-American community has grown. We're going to put a map in place that would diminish it down to two. Just not to make sense that if Texas is who we say we are, one state for Texas, why then would we eliminate districts where minority representation is diminished? We cannot have a state where we believe that we would minimize the impact of every voter in this state. And we know this map does that. So this amendment basically clarifies that the districts that we're pairing, because we have pairings, but we have much fewer pairings than on the map that's being presented today. We did not break up communities' interests. We made sure that we limited the splitting of counties, all of the factors that would make Texas as strong as possible. And so with that, Mr. Speaker and members, I'd ask that you consider, consider what's good for Texas and for Texans. How do we do what's right for Texas? And this map would at least maximize what you all did in 2021, and I say you all because you were the majority then, and it allows us other citizens in Texas to have a presence because we are here as well. And so I would just encourage you to look at the growth, the population growth, and how we move districts to support the growth of this state. We all won, we say, but yet we're willing to take away from districts, take districts away. So I would ask you to consider Congressional Plan C2165. It creates African-American districts and Hispanic districts at CVAP 50-plus, so we meet the standards that the Justice Department has said we need to do. It does few pairings. We pair many less districts than the current map before. So again, I think this is a compromise of how do we maximize the presence. You still, as a majority, have maintained the presence that you created in 2021, but it allows us also to maintain and recognize the growth of the communities across the state. With that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, I move adoption.
Mr. Speaker, for what purpose?
Would the lady yield for questions?
General lady for questions?
Sure.
Shields for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I take it from your layout, it's your contention that this amendment complies with the Voting Rights Act, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I looked at the data for the 2024 election for Donald Trump in Texas and looked at the partisan performance of these districts that you have put together in this plan. Would it surprise you to learn that this plan that you've put together would give 16 seats that perform in favor of Democratic candidates in your map? Would you dispute that, are you aware of that?
I'm not aware that it does give 16 seats. In fact, it says it's just the opposite. We understand it to be different than that.
So when I looked at the 2024 election result data, it showed 16 seats with more than a 50% partisan performance, and that would be an increase of three seats over what is currently there. Are you aware of that?
I'm thinking your data must be different than mine and therefore, because we see it as 12 Democratic seats versus 16.
But let's assume, assume with me for a moment that it is 16. That would be 42% of the seats. Are you aware that the Democratic Party and congressional candidates in 2024 only got 40.39% of the vote?
No, I just suggested, I think we have different information because we don't have 16 seats according to the data we have. We say it only takes us 12, so I don't have the same information.
Understood. We'll take a look at the data. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker.
Speaker, for what purpose?
Will the gentlelady yield for questions?
General lady for questions?
Yes.
Shields for questions.
Ms. Davis, can I ask where this map came from?
Yes, it came from my office. We've done redistricting for the last 30 years, every cycle and the interim cycle that we did, redistricting as well, it came from there.
Okay.
If you will notice, it would be the map that I presented in 2021. I don't know if you were here, you might not have been, but we've, for the last 30 years, I've presented maps to maximize the presence so that African-American voices can be heard in Texas through their governmental process.
And this map is the same as a previous map that you filed?
Which is additionally, yes. We filed this in 2021.
It's the same one? Did you hold any public hearings on this map?
It was brought to the floor and it didn't, it was information we pulled together from our constituents. So we didn't have, I wasn't on redistricting to have the hearings, we didn't have hearings around. It was presented when Chairman Hunter was chairman of redistricting. He didn't allow us to make presentations, so it was brought to the floor.
And when did you file this map this time?
It was filed when we first started having, redistricting first came up.
Okay.
I don't know the actual date.
Okay. Did you receive any outside counsel for this map?
No.
You didn't work with anybody? Okay.
No. I worked, let me tell you who I worked with. I worked with the constituents and members that we've worked with this over the past years in terms of trying to ensure that we capture districts that represent the people of state of Texas. So no, I don't have an outside counsel, I'm not a lawyer, I'm a layperson who's worked on this and continue to believe that Texas can do better.
Okay. Would it surprise you to know that several members on the floor today have questions and influences that are coming from third parties, scripted questions, influence from the NAACP?
Well, would you be surprised, you'd be surprised that in the last 30 years that every district and I've offered maps, because my person in my office works on maps over the years, would you be surprised about that? This is not a new thing for me, this is something I've worked on continuously, so I haven't needed to get outside counsel. I'm involved in the community, the state, I'm redistricting over the years.
In the hearings, the redistricting hearings, a lot of the testimonies that we heard were about some of the odd shapes and the stretched districts, but a lot of those are maintained in your map. So did you consider compactness of the districts?
We did.
Whereas some of the districts that were the most concerned had a distance across that was less than a mi, half a mile.
Okay. It's like, it's like the one that they're drawing here in the maps that you're presenting that go the whole length of Texas, that go from Austin down to Port Aransas. I was much more compact than that, and they were drawn much more compact than that. We don't have one that leaves here and goes to West Texas.
I'm looking at several that are stretches.
Don't know what you're looking at.
Erratic, erratic shapes and some stretches.
That's long been an issue with regard to redistricting, and I can assure you, our maps are much more compact than the ones that we're considering on the map that the chairman is presenting today.
Are you aware that the current map actually does fix a lot more compactness and it also draws the lines on natural boundaries, keeping counties whole, the natural boundaries?
All of them.
A lot of the cities are no longer cut in half?
But you have some that still are.
Okay. Did you have this map reviewed by any federal oversight to make sure it's in compliance with the Voting Rights Act? Okay, thank you.
I don't have the luxury of a law firm drawing my map and bringing it to me and say present it. I didn't have that luxury. What I have is a staff person who has consistently for the last 40 years been involved in redistricting and making sure that we look at how we get the best representation for all Texans.
Mr. Reynolds, for what purpose?
Mr. Speaker, I move that all the remarks on House Bill 4 be reduced to write in the place of the journal.
Members, you've heard the motion, there's objection, chair has noted.
Mr. Speaker, may the gentlelady yield for questions?
Yes.
Time has expired.
Mr. Speaker, I move for an extension of time.
Members, you've heard the motion, there's objection. There's a record vote requested on all motions today. Clerk, ring the bell. Mr. Hunter, voting aye. King, voting aye. Have all members voted. Have all members voted. 110 ayes and 23 nays, the motion to extend time prevails.
Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Reynolds, for what purpose?
Would the gentlelady yield for questions? Well.
Does the gentlelady yield for questions?
Yes.
Shields for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Davis, what does your, refresh my memory, what does your amendment seek to do?
Actually, we seek to maximize the growth and development of the communities that live here in Texas. We had a base map, I took the base map that we passed in 2021 out of this chamber to make sure that we comply with the rules of engagement as it relates to the redistricting process, and we looked at ways to ensure that we didn't minimize and not take away from many of the constituents. So this map seeks to do that. One of the challenges that they brought forth with redistricting is that the CVAP and the Justice Department said that they need to be 50-plus. So we attempted to make that 50-plus for these districts we're presenting, the amendments too, that's all we did, was to comply with what Justice Department said.
So just so we're clear, for purposes of this discussion, your amendment is based on the census data from the 2020 census, is that correct?
That's correct.
And isn't it true that for redistricting, the normal course of redistricting is after we get a census every decade?
That's correct.
And isn't it true that based on the 2020 census, that 95% of the growth in Texas was based on the growth of minorities that included African-Americans, Asian-Americans, and Hispanics, the Latino community, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so your map attempts to reflect that growth in minority populations, is that correct?
As well as the growth, but as well as adjusted the numbers in the districts relative to what the Department of Justice said was flawed in the map that we passed.
So one of the questions I want to ask, you indicated when you were being questioned by the- by the previous witness, you indicated that you've worked on redistricting for the past thirty years. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so you know a little bit about a redistricting, correct?
Just a tad bit. It changes. It's evolving. I never knew us to do this.
Is it unusual to have a mid-decade redistricting?
It is unusual to have a mid-decade redistricting plan. That's not, that has not been a practice. It happened one other time that I've been here. And as Chairman Hunter said, you can do it. But the question is, why are we doing something that we've already done? And we did this in 2021. And, you know, if we're not going to perfect it, why are we changing it to alter it to be more draconious on us and constituents than better?
Representative Davis, are you aware that the state of Texas has more African-American population than any other state in the United States of America?
I am aware of that. This is the largest African-American community across the nation.
And are you aware that currently there are four African-American congressional seats in the state of Texas?
At this point, there's four and potentially one that we could do as a coalition district or as an emerging district, an opportunity district.
And so if we can identify for the purposes of this record, you have the, currently, the ninth congressional district, that is Congressman Al Green. You have the eighteenth congressional district that was previously held by Congressman Sylvester Turner, who is deceased and the seat is vacant. You have the thirtieth congressional district held by Congresswoman Jasmine Crockett, and the thirty-third congressional district held by Congressman Mark Bisi. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And those are four African-American districts in Texas, correct?
That's correct. And what we tried to make sure in this map, our amendment adjusts CVAP according to the challenges that the Justice Department had raised. And for example, we reduced in CD nine, the Hispanic CVAP from fifty point five to fifty point two, so that we would not, we, we didn't change it. We just addressed it.
And we, and you say we addressed it. We addressed it to make sure it complied with the Voting Rights, Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, correct?
That's correct.
And specifically, section two, correct?
That's correct.
And would you agree with me that we've already heard from Chairman Hunter that the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, section two, is still current law?
That is correct.
And isn't it true also that Texas, in the past, has been found to have intentionally discriminated when it came to redistricting against African-Americans and Hispanics? Is that correct?
That's correct. In fact, we still have a case pending from the seat from, the maps from two thousand and one because we continually have this problem with knowingly discriminating or creating a discriminatory map as it relates to African-Americans.
And Representative Davis, isn't it also true that based on the current proposed map that you're seeking to correct, isn't it true that House Bill Four dilutes the African-American congressional representation by a whopping fifty percent?
That's correct. And that's what troubles me.
So we're reducing, even though Texas has more African-Americans than any other state, and even though, based on the 2020 census data, we had an increase in African-American population, we are now, based on this current map, instead of increasing it to reflect the population growth, we're actually decreasing it in half. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's the challenge here, is that we're now talking about minimizing and decreasing the representation that we currently have. Why would we take a state that we were saying we're growing and now we're going to take it down? So that's what this amendment, this amendment does, is seeks to recognize the growth and protect the integrity of those populations.
And as I read your, I did look at your amendment. Your amendment seeks to not pack and crack African-American and Latino communities. Isn't that correct?
That's right. Because essentially what you're doing is saying, and this is kind of the challenge for us as Texans, we need to recognize that our communities are more interdependent and interrelated than they are. And so we cannot just eliminate districts because you don't vote that way. You've got to allow the representation of all people. And if you don't, you're going to be, they're calling it racial, political gerrymandering, but it amounts to being racially gerrymandered.
Well, Representative Davis, would you agree with me that the proposed House Bill Four is a racial gerrymandered map?
And, and, and in the conversation that Chairman Hunter laid out, he said it's politically, but the impact politically has been, it is racially. So while it was political, it also had racial implications.
Right. It's a racial gerrymander.
And we're trying to make sure that we don't put a map in place that is legally, racially legally gerrymandering it.
Right. And so when you look at, and I want to hone in on House Bill Four, when you hone in on House Bill Four, it pairs CD nine, held by Congressman Al Green, with CD eighteen, correct?
That's correct.
And isn't it true, based on your experience, that Congressional District eighteen was first held by Congresswoman Barbara Jordan as the first African-American Congresswoman since Reconstruction that was only after the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, correct?
That's correct. And, and I want to mention eighteen because two thousand and one, we went through many, many discussions about restoring, restoring the integrity of eighteen and the voters.
Correct.
District eighteen. So basically, we would be undoing what we just did in two thousand and one to District eighteen, CD eighteen.
And I'm glad you brought that up. I want to make sure that the record is, is clear on that. Back in 2021, it seems like I remember very vividly that then Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee had to come to Austin before the redistricting committee to talk about the unpairing of the ninth and the eighteenth congressional district, correct?
That's correct.
They had Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee paired with Congressman Al Green, correct?
That's correct. And this, the committee here, the committee here reviewed, redistricted and restored eighteen.
It restored it.
It restored it because they found that it made sense that it would be restored versus leaving that pairing. And now we're sitting here doing something the same thing.
Now we're doing it all over again, correct?
That's correct.
I don't know about you, but I, I would imagine that Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee, Congressman Sylvester Turner, Congresswoman Barbara Jordan would be turning over in their grave if they saw this. Would you agree with me?
I agree that, that is why it was changed in two